Good evening. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Kettering City Council. Today's date is September 27, 2022. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will have a starting location. Dear Lord, thank you for your abundant blessings and surrounding us with stewardship and a supportive community in Kettering. We thank you for the ability to engage in useful work and for the honor of bearing these important responsibilities. We are grateful for your boundless love for all of us. Please continue to give us the strength and compassion with which to serve and grant the wisdom to make appropriate decisions. Help us remain humble and grateful for the opportunity to lead. Guide this council so that we may work in harmony while serving our citizens with integrity and purpose. Allow us to fulfill the responsibilities entrusted in us by our residents. I would now like to recognize our Miami Valley Communications Council operator, Mike Supradny. Mike, thank you for your assistance. Wave back there. Mrs. Hall has an excused absence this evening, and we need to amend the agenda. We have a motion to amend the agenda by adding "After City Council Report, Update, and Executive Session" under Section 121.06K of the Codified Ordinances for the Purposes of Personnel Matters. We need a second on this motion.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Moved and seconded, and call the roll. Tony?
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Kleipas?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes. Okay. We have approval of the minutes, Mrs. Fisher.
Well, Your Honor, I have reviewed both the council meeting and workshop minutes for September the 13th. I find them in order, and I move for approval.
Second. Okay. The motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none. Call the roll.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Kleipas?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes. Okay. We now have proclamations. We have an appointment to the Volunteer Advisory Council. Bettina Puchemi? I bet I didn't say that right. Puchemi? Okay. With a term ending 12/31/24. Ask for motion to approve the above appointment. Mr. Kleipas?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Okay. Now we come to one of my favorite parts of the year, and that's the awarding of the Neighborhood Prize Awards. I love to drive around the city and go, "I should have nominated that one, but I didn't get around to it." But so many of our citizens do such a fabulous job maintaining their properties and beautifying it with landscape and just really creative things. So without further to do, I'm going to go ahead and call on Don Kirchner, who is our volunteer administrator, who is going to be making a presentation tonight. We'll get all kinds of ideas and inspirations.
Yeah. Thanks so much, Mayor Lehner and members of City Council. The Neighborhood Prize Award recognizes property owners who have made significant improvements to the appearance of their home or business or have maintained their property impeccably year after year. In May, all Kettering property owners received information in contact with Kettering asking for nominations for this award. We received over 200 nominations, and each one was reviewed by our committed Neighborhood Pride Committee. A winner is selected from each of our 12 districts in June, July, and August, and in addition, one commercial property is recognized as a Neighborhood Prize Award winner each month. This popular program would not be possible without the help of our dedicated volunteers and our committee co-chairs, Rob Jan, Gail Carone, Mark and Carol Messer. Would all of you please stand if you're here? Thank you, Mayor Lehner and Council, for all of your support with this program. Thanks to Don Parker for being here this evening to take photographs, and for Miami Valley Communications Council, Carl Sukamel, for filming the properties, editing the properties, and putting together a really spectacular video. So without further ado, we're going to show the video, and as we go through, if our award winners are here, please stand up so that we can see you and give you some acclaim for that.[361.27]
Congratulations again to everybody. Just when I think, I spend a lot of time in my yard. And just when I think, I think I've got it. I think my fish pond is the right size. I have room for improvement, so. Thank you for your inspiration. So this video will be made available on the city's website. And we also have a version saved to a flash drive for everybody this evening. And I'll give that to you when you get your award. So before we begin, I'd like to remind you that you're all invited to attend a reception in the lower level of the government center following the awards presentation. Be aware that sound carries very well in this building. So while we're transitioning to celebrate, please remember to do so quietly. I think we're ready for the awards. I'm going to have all of the June winners come on and come down forward. If you'll kind of start gathering right behind me. We'll go through each month. And at the end, I'll turn it over to Mayor Lehner. She'll be taking pictures with everybody. We will send you pictures, so don't worry. You don't need someone else taking pictures. Dawn's got that covered. And then we're going to do a group picture as well. So June, come on down. Okay, Mayor, if you want to stand right over here. And Nick, you're ready to start passing out. Okay, so District 3, we have Brian Moore from Burning Tree Drive. So, yeah, Brian will come forward and then we'll call your name. Nick will give you your certificate and we'll kind of do a big loop. And our commercial winner, Robertson Law Firm. District 4, Gregory and Mary Lou Sherwood, East Oak Tree Drive. And our commercial winner, Club Maranelle on Judith Drive. August, if you want to make your way forward. Our August winners, starting with District 1, Gary and Mary Boucher from West Baton Did we miss anybody? All right, I'll hand it over to you, Mayor.
I never know whether to stay down here or go up there. Great job. Just super. And, you know, I often hear people report that Kettering has so many beautiful neighborhoods. And if you ever doubt it, you just need to watch one of those videos. So keep it up. And those of you who never dig a shovel and your spouse just took full credit. We know it takes two. Thank you very much for all you've done. Wait one second. I forgot to thank Dawn for the wonderful job you and Nick have done. Nick, did you stand up and take a bow? And a big thank you to all of our judges, too. They do a lot of work. Thank you.
We are going to take a group photo. So Mayor, I don't know if you want to go behind or stand in front.
Where?
In the back. Okay. This'll be fun. And then we will go downstairs. So if you want to take your items with you or move them around a little bit.
We don't always stand up.
We'll stand up behind you.
Yes, you do. You had me more than my daughter, though.
Sorry about that. How thoughtless. We don't get down there. I'm sorry. It was not a good plan. We could part the waves.
They could.
They could part the waves.
So hold your smiles.
And that's the sample of sound right there.
She's telling me I know her from somewhere.
I know her. I couldn't believe the tests. Yeah, you give me away.
I will tell. Ellen, I'll tell Andy I saw you. He still hasn't recovered from working hard.
Um, wait a minute. No, what's next?
No, that's the second.
Public comment. Legislation. And then we do ordinances.
Public hearings. Mine is different than yours.
Yeah, you're right. It's missing.
They had two different scripts.
Keep going. We're in the middle of a meeting. Come on. We've got to get up. Come on. Keep it moving, brother.
Bye, Dawn.
We're on overtime.
Giddy up. We've got to get this meeting going.
Call the meeting back to order?
Call it back.
Maybe? Okay. We have no public hearings this evening. Now is the time that we normally would take any public comment on any non-legislative items. But since we skipped over the opportunity for anyone who wanted to speak to any legislative items, I will do that first. I don't think there's anyone who wants to do that. Apparently none. Okay. So, anyone wishing to speak before council with comments or new information that they'd like to bring before tonight's meeting may do so at this point. Each speaker is limited to five minutes. Speaker must state their name and address, and comments should be addressed to council. Is there anyone who would like to take this opportunity to speak? Seeing none, we will move on to ordinances in second reading, of which there are none. We have one resolution this evening, and I'll call Mrs. Fisher to introduce it.
Yes, Your Honor, I do have a resolution. Accepting the rates as determined by the Budget Commission and the authorization, the necessary tax levies and certifying same to the Montgomery County and Green County auditors. It is requested by the Finance Department, and I move for approval.
Second. It's been moved and seconded, Mr. Schwederman.
Thank you, Your Honor.
It was just a guess.
This is the annual legislation accepting the city's property tax rates. It is required by Montgomery County, Green County, and the Ohio Revised Code each year. The setting of the rates does not represent any increase in taxes. These are basically establishing the same rates that we've had for many years for our property tax rate. The general fund at 3.5 voted. The general fund at 2.2 unvoted. The police pension at .3 for a total of six mils. And then the bond retirement fund of .63 voted. And this relates to our Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Arts bond levy. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Okay, please call the roll.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Kleipas?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes. Okay, we now have ordinances in first reading, of which there are none. Certificates and petitions. Mary Asville, do you have any?
Your Honor, we have no certifications or petitions this evening.
Thank you. We will now move on to the manager's report, community update.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have a few items for the community tonight. The first is a reminder that our very popular shred day will be this coming Saturday, October the 1st, from 9:00 a.m. to noon. This year, the event will be hosted in the front parking lot of Fairmont High School on Sawyer Road. This new location will give us additional space for the ever-increasing crowds that we have each year for our shred day activity. So again, 9:00 to noon on October the 1st, front parking lot, Fairmont High School. The next item is a commemoration for our fire department. They are celebrating 100 years. There will be an open house on Sunday from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. at the fire headquarters on Hempstead Station Drive. So we'll have plenty of activities for adults and kids, and a lot of equipment there from young and old for folks to look at. So again, an open house for our fire department as they celebrate 100 years. It's also a celebration of the beginning of that National Fire Prevention Week, which this year will be October the 9th through October the 15th. Folks interested or have questions about fire safety and our fire department can contact the fire department at 296-248-9. And it's hard to believe, but we are once again at the beginning of the Medicare open enrollment period. That period starts October the 15th and runs through December the 7th. Residents can schedule a Medicare enrollment individual appointment by calling the Kettering Connection at 296-3330. And fall is obviously right around the corner, and we'll start with our leaf pickup. That will begin Monday, October the 17th. We will start in District 1 and work our way through the community. And you can refer to our website for our location, or call our leaf hotline at 296-2472. Just a reminder for our residents, when you're setting out your leaves, you are setting out your leaves to the curb. They do not have to be in the street. They just be, they can be adjacent to the curb in your yard. But only leaves, not sticks and brush and other items. Those items are dangerous both for our equipment and for our staff. Our Yard Debris Drop Off Center can take those items. It remains open into early December, and that's located on Woodman Center Drive. And Beggar's Night will be Monday, October 31st, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. Your Honor, that's all I have for you tonight for a nice community update. I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
Any questions? Okay, seeing none. Thank you, Mr. Schwederman. We will call on Mrs. Fisher to be the first person to give an update.
Well, ma'am, while you were out of town, it was quite a busy time with about 10 different things to attend. But I'll highlight two. The first one being the Hart Walk. We had a great cross-section of our city that participated in the Hart Walk that was down at Day Airfield, and in honor of our city manager. And I had an opportunity to speak to all social studies kids at Kettering-Fairmont High School about the importance of registering to vote, being informed, and casting their votes, so their voices were heard this week as well. And those are the two top things that I would like to report.
Great. Thank you very much. Thank you for filling in. Mr. Kleipas?
I'll try to report my two top things also. That seems like a good thing. I was able to attend a celebration of a new retiree from the police department, Lee Sanders. Wish Lee and the family well on their new adventures, whatever that might be. I'm sure that the chief's going to miss him and all the work he's done for the city. My real highlight of the last two weeks, though, was working with our economic development manager, Mrs. Shrimp, and quite a few other city folks, people from Montgomery- Manager, Mrs. Shrimp, and quite a few other city folks, people from Montgomery County Economic Development. Last week, we visited almost over 70 businesses in the Stroop Road area. We broke up into, I think it might have been about 12 teams, three people on a team, so there'd be 30, 35 people that went out and visited different businesses on that afternoon. And a kind of common theme in meeting with the business owners or business managers or what have you, was that they're just about all experiencing the same problems we hear and read about, and that is not being able to recruit new employees. Or when they do, they don't last too long, and they're gone very soon. And also, problems they're experiencing related to supply chain issues where their inventories might be down low, but it's because either truck drivers were out up the road, or supplies weren't being made, or chips weren't available, everybody has different reasons for the breakdown in the supply chain before it gets to the final destination, and that affects our businesses. So, thanks a lot for putting that together, I think it was well-received, a lot of good information, the feedback to various organizations about what some of the problems are that our businesses face that we might be able to make an impact on. And last but not least, along with seeing our businesses, remember when you have a choice, choose the Kettering businesses, spend your money. Thank you, that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Kleipas.
Just a quick comment and congratulations from me to all our winners this evening for it shows how beautiful some of the residents truly are in Kettering businesses, but I'd be remiss if I didn't say there's a lot more out there that are just as good. So, this is a great city to live in, and when you drive around, you see the pride some of our homeowners and business owners taking their property, and it's refreshing. Other parts of the area, you don't see that. That's it for me.
I have nothing to report tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor, just two quick things. On Wednesday, the 21st, I had the approbation of representing the mayor for the Chet Roush Educational Hall of Fame selection ceremony. We had to select folks to enter the Hall of Fame, and they will be announced shortly, and that takes place in October. And then also, tomorrow evening, we don't do things in advance, but I'm gonna do it tomorrow night, because I want to thank all of council, we are hosting the First Suburbs Group that we are a member of, we'll have elected officials from 12 communities coming to Kettering tomorrow night to learn about our community and the Ombudsman's Office from downtown, and I just want to thank all of council for being there, so it should be a good event, thank you, that's all I have, Your Honor.
Great, thank you. As has been alluded to by a couple of our members, I have been out of town. I finally was able to take a vacation that was scheduled three years ago and canceled three years in a row. So, I went to Croatia, and beautiful, beautiful place to go, but I have to kind of laugh because, well, it's not really funny. Mr. Kleipas was talking about the problems that we have with recruitment, retention, supply chain. It was so evident everywhere we went, in Italy and Croatia, understaffed workers, inexperienced workers, it just continues to baffle me as to where everyone has gone. They obviously haven't fled the country because they can't find the workers over there either, so. It was a nice break, I appreciate all of you filling in for me as you did, and I promise to stay in town for a while. All right, I think that concludes our meeting tonight, so with no further, this comes before City Council. Our next regularly scheduled City Council meeting will be October 11th, 2022, and at this time, Kettering City Council will now enter executive session. Thank you very much for being here tonight.